Good morning. Called meeting to order, public comment. May the record show there's no public here to make a comment.
There's one.
There's one. He left to go to the bathroom, I think. He was here earlier.
Well, he wasn't in the room whenever I said that. Charlie, you got anything you want to say about anything?
Uh, well, uh, I was just looking over the numbers from the PD.
Yeah. If you want to say something, public comment time. Give us your name and where you live and say what's on your mind.
You know, I'm one of those highly visible people. I'm sure everybody knows exactly where I live. But, okay. My name is Charlie Semidellis. I live at 604 Ocean Boulevard West. Um, one of the primary drivers to me coming here was certainly about the pier. Find out what was going on there. Secondly, was to find out what the budgetary issues are and why we're short of police officers on the island. Uh, I did review some of the numbers with Chief Dixon. We're well below whatever other PD is paying out there. These guys need to be... Alright, so now we added parking spots. We did all that as well. That's going to bring more stuff to this island that these guys are going to have to deal with. And if we're paying them what I saw we're paying them and we're so below scale to everybody else around us, how are we going to get anybody to hire into those two open spots? I think that needs to be addressed. I think if... Those things are critical to make the rest of the infrastructure tick here. If you don't have police coverage for the added people that are coming here, for all of the stuff that's going to happen, we're going to have a lot more trouble here. We're going to turn into Myrtle Beach real quick, I think. And I don't mean to cast disperation towards Myrtle Beach, but it's a little bit more of a Wild West there than it is here. I don't want that here. So I think that it's pretty important that we address what the police officers are being paid. And I think that needs to be a first consideration in many cases before we spread out into other things and spend money all over the place. And then we can't give them what they need. So, that's my soapbox moment. So we'll go from there on that.
Thanks, Eric.
Before we start, could we add something to the agenda after we finish the budget discussion before we go to the pier? Heather, can we add something after the... After we discuss the budget before we go to the pier?
I mean, if the board wants you, they discourage you from adding to a special meeting, but that's decided.
I would like to add discussion possible action on Block Q parking lot. I move that we add the agenda item, discussion possible action on the Block Q parking lot.
I agree.
Everybody agrees.
Do we need to vote on it or just by resolution?
Last meeting? I'm trying to figure who's running the meeting. What do you commissioners want to do? I mean, we've got motion in the second on the floor, I believe. Do you want to discuss it? Want to vote on it?
Yep.
On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can I say no? Alright. You have it. Next time you'll talk about, is it number three?
I think that's mine. David Hewitt, town manager. If I could... I think that the discussion I would like to preamble towards requires that I start at the end and work back to the beginning. So if I could direct your attention to page 23 of the handouts, which is the FEMA Projects Fund, I want to point out that even though it's not specifically addressed as a priority in this year's board goals, the FEMA project is probably not going to be done for a while. Page 23. Looking at page 23 and the FEMA Projects Fund, specifically on the... In the revenue section, the line that reads loan proceeds. The reason why I'm bringing this forward to the board is that the short version is the town is probably on the hook for a million dollars of interest on the special obligation bond. Little less short version is that, for folks that may not be aware or maybe listening in, is that we have a three-year special obligation bond, which in effect is a balloon note that currently has $19 million out on the front going into year two of the note as of July 16th in about three weeks. We've been talking with the Department of Public Safety, North Carolina Department of Public Safety, going on three years now, trying to figure out whether or not the interest on the $27.7 million special obligation bond, along with the cost of issuance, would be reimbursed to the town as project expenses. Now, as we wrap up the final payout on the project, which I just processed yesterday, and to process the associated reimbursements to the FEMA staff, to FEMA, the staff has become skeptical of the Fed's reimbursement of the $1 million. What we... What we see is that there is no federal ownership of the process, no feedback to the North Carolina Department of Public Safety, and who is not able to discern any movement of our issues. Neither is our congressional liaison, who has been contacted on several occasions. So as we finalize that last payment and the draws and the request for the final project inspection, our thinking is that that disapproval of our reimbursement of the interest request will cause an unacceptable delay in the reimbursement of the last 25% of the project expenses because a final inspection of the project will not be performed when there is an appeal pending. I guess the good news is, is that it could be twice as bad at $2 million because the mobility savings in our project by consolidating the mobilization brought the original cost down from $46 million. So my point is, is that that million dollars is going to have to come from somewhere. And to that somewhere, I have prepared a fund balance calculation handout. If I could direct your attention to that? The fund balance calculation handout is pages two and three of that handout. So your estimated with this existing budget as presented, or drafted, if you will, the general fund balance estimate that we'd be going into the new budget year is right at a 72% fund balance ratio. The estimated fund balance would be just over $3 million, at $3,020,000 and some change. The B part fund balance estimate... Oh, and the general fund balance estimate, that is in accordance... You have a policy that says it's between 40 and 70%. That is the board's written policy. The B part fund balance estimate is entirely different thing. As calculated, your $460,000 in the red on the estimated available fund balance. And that's calculated by your ending fund balance as of 30 June 21. You've got to take out the $1.3 million that Brunswick County is holding as escrow on the special obligation bond for the Central Reach project, less this year's fund balance appropriations, and less your debt service for the upcoming year. So that B part fund balance available is, shall we say, limited. Continuing on. There is some good news, though. Last night, I understand that Congressman Rousher released his congressional priorities list to the... His submission for funding to the Hill or to Congress. And of the 15 projects that were submitted, Holden Beach had three of those. And those three projects were a million dollars for the Army Corps of Engineers to fund their piece of the coastal storm damage Brunswick County beaches Holden Beach project. The Greensboro Street Lift Station Number Two Hazard Mitigation Upgrade at 2.7... Two points... Right at $2.7 million. And then the Ocean Boulevard Stormwater Mitigation Project, that's $750,000. So that still has to be, you know, passed into law with the upcoming congressional budget. That would be like 30 September. Still, every bit of it could fall out on the cutting room floor. But if you don't get your... If you don't get your placeholder in, you won't get anything. But we have... We have three of the congressman's 15 projects that have been submitted for funding through... For federal dollars. I do... Next, I want to point out the omissions in the spreadsheets. And those omissions are in the Police Department. And to... Beyond the funding of the police... The salaries, the salary line in the Police Department actually doesn't include the detective that the chief had requested. So it's... It's not in there. It just... It was a... It was an error in omission. The personnel... So that's about a $60,000 swing on that Police Department budget. And the personnel spreadsheet...
David.
I'm sorry.
There is a... That $60,000 swing, does that impact these pages?
It does. It does impact this handout here, which...
So it needs to be...
I mean, that...
$60,000 needs to be added to these numbers?
Yeah, that'd be added, and it'll move everything around.
Okay.
So what we'd attempted to do was to rack up last year, this year's budget and to show the personnel... The proposed merit COLA increases impacts as a percentage in the personnel spreadsheet that is page one of that handout. The rest of it should be pretty close. There is... There was a question from Mr. Smith on the insurance cost delta. And those insurance costs have gone up 3%, roughly 3%. In addition to... But that's for the person... That is the last portion on any personnel things. The next thing I want to point out is that while the budget has been predicated on no tax increases, the... I do want to point out specifically that the sewer assessment has to increase from the 380, I think it was this last year, to $459... $459.73. And that's a straight-up function of the debt service on the upgrade of the lift station number three. Moving to the Capital Improvement Plan, we have updated the water sewer portion of the Capital Improvement Plan that the board okayed last... At the last meeting. So we could get that in the grant... Submitted for the grant. And I'd like to acknowledge that the B part portion of the Capital Improvement Plan does not... While there is a $150,000 line for the pier, it doesn't include the $500,000 to $750,000 in the out-year estimates that had been made previously for repairs. And neither does it include the $116,000 estimate that the divers report reflected the other night. We put a $150,000 placeholder in there as an estimate. I believe that was what we'd estimated it would cost to make a number of repairs, whether they were in the building or some of the cosmetics around there. But I just wanted to detail those out for the board. Okay, that's about the... About the limit of the preamb... Preambulatory's. The spreadsheets have been updated or revised and QC'd. I'm sure there are some other idiosyncrasies in there that are... That would require massage in. But it's before you for discussion and direction as you see fit.
Alright, what's the pleasure of the board? How do you want to go forward?
I have a list of items that I believe we need to discuss. And I believe there are other commissioners who agree with me that they need to be discussed. If we just want to start, and anybody else can just... Somebody else wants to take the lead, I'm fine. But... What's your pleasure, guys? Number one, the raised budget. A 7.4% COLA increase, 3% merit. Nine exempt employees, if you do 7.4% COLA, will get over... Will get approximately $44,000. And the other 17 employees, the hourly employees, will get $42,500. Doing a 7.4% COLA is not the way to address helping the people who need it the most and the departments that we need to hire to. I have sent... I have just... I have sent to each commissioner separately and to the town manager a couple of weeks ago, my proposal that we should look at this differently. We gave everybody a $750 bonus back in December that I instigated. Had I known that inflation was going to stay the way it was, had I known that there were actually programs being proposed under COVID and ARP that actually were being used by counties and towns to justify bonuses, had I known the state was going to do something for its employees, all of this wrapping together, I would have proposed we do more in December. But that doesn't mean we can't do it now before the end of the fiscal year. So I would propose that we have a $750 bonus, additional bonus, before the end of this fiscal year, which then becomes sort of in line with what I've been reading about municipalities, some counties doing for the current fiscal year. I would propose to address the departments that are most hurting, Public Works, Police. But I would simply say all of the hourly employees get a 50 cent raise immediately as of July 1st. 5% merit across the board to be managed. I would hope that the people in the lowest third of the... Of their pay range would be considered for slightly larger raises. And then come January next year, hedging that inflation is going to stay high. And as a sort of a retention bonus, another $750. And if I calculated right, doing all of that that way is about an 8% increase on our current, based on this year's current salary budget. I also... Jeremy, I know how much you want a detective. I know how much you want those body cams. I just cannot this year see how to do that. For one thing on the detective, I think it is really more important to find those patrol officers and work to get them and retain. And we can talk about the detective again next year, hopefully when things stabilize. The same thing on the body cams. It's just a lot of money this year in a tight year. I am not saying don't do the money that you need to upgrade the interrogation room because that's a separate issue. But I would hope you would understand why I don't believe we can justify this year detective and body cam. And if anybody disagrees with me, please say so.
No, I do agree that we need the interrogation room equipment upgraded. That's important. I think there's some rule of regulation against that, or about that. And again, it's something that you and I have talked about before on the body cameras and the... Some type of detective. I think that is important however, with the budgetary restraints that we have. I think you understand that we think that, or I think that you need to increase salaries to the point where you can attract some officers to fill the vacant positions. In my opinion, when you're stretching your staff then, number one, you don't get 100%. After eight hours or so, you lose productivity. And number two, if you have to stretch them out, the overtime hours looks like that would complicate or increase their... You know, once you've got some salary, however, you're wearing them out, burning them out. So I'd like to see some incentives there to help get you some help in here.
I mean, I would also like to point out, and other... Again, other municipalities, other counties in the state, they're looking for ways to attract people. There is nothing wrong with giving a signing bonus. There is nothing wrong... Again, if somebody is coming in before September, based on what I'm proposing, anybody who's in here as of September 1st and has done a good job would be eligible for the $750 in January.
If I could... If I could interject there, our personnel policy doesn't provide for a signing bonus.
We can modify things, which is...
Right, but I'm just telling you, the way it's written today doesn't provide for that.
But this is where, when departments are having problems, some creativity has to be worked in. And I would expect that the town manager comes to us when there are problems with some ideas to help.
Well, I'll talk about a couple of problems specific to that. Let's just take the Police Department's starting salary and what type of signing bonus are you talking about? Because when you've got a guy that's maybe a girl, guy, that's hired a couple of years ago and you hired him at the starting salary, the beginning salary that is by the policy, and then you hire somebody to...
I'm aware of this. This is part of what you have to do, is lay it out. I'm aware of this, David. I've been through it before in my life. When I say bring it to us, this is all the consideration of how you bring it to us.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I was trying to articulate was, while you may understand that, the rest of the board may not be cognizant of it. So what I'm trying to articulate is the fact that if you've hired somebody a couple of years ago and then you're going to put bonus money on top of that, you've got a new guy that's... That in effect is making, in that year anyway, would be making more than the person that's been with you for a couple of years. It's a morale issue. So, I mean, you can put money toward the personnel side of it, but unless you address the classification plan piece of it to slide it to the right, also the ups to starting salaries, you've really only addressed half the issue.
There is no problem with moving the pay ranges based on a formula. There is no problem with that. The problem is using COLA to determine raises. I have the 2021 sheet, pay range sheet that the town produced. And there was a calculation done with a certain inflation so that there was a different hiring rate maximum than what we approved in the personnel plan. So it's not that the town hasn't been doing it, hasn't been making minor adjustments to that range. I would also say the hiring rate doesn't always have...
I need to correct you there, Pat. That was a draft, and that has not been put into play as far as the classification and pay plan. Pay plan. What is... Exists now is what the board approved back when the personnel plan was done. What you have is basically a working document that has not been put into effect.
Then what I would say...
It was because we found issues with it, looking at the lower... The employees that were just hired, they would be making less than what we were raising that amount to.
Yes, I know. So the 2021 moved by a couple percent. The proposed 2022 was 7.4%. Again, it's not an issue for the town to move these ranges and come to the board and simply say this is a proposal. This is all part of managing this difficult situation.
Well, I mean, it becomes an issue if you move the classification plan and don't have a corresponding movement of the salaries for the people that are contained within that. Because then you get the same... You get the same effect that you move the classification scale 10%. You're bringing in a new person that in effect is making more than the person that was here for two or three years.
We... It was about four or five employees. We couldn't do it that way because they were the incoming people would be making more than the people who have already been here. So it didn't seem fair. You don't give the existing employees something.
Yes, I know. So we stay with the old systems and we become more... I... We become more bonus-driven to try to make up what we can't do in the absolute percent of merit. But for Public Works people, between a $750 bonus and 50 cents an hour, a lot of them are already looking at 5%. And that's without a merit increase. In the Police Department, the... I'll just say the lower end... I don't know how many of them are still here, but the people who are making the... Let's see, the Police Department, the... The $17 an hour. It's 2.9% is 50 cents an hour increase, and a $750 bonus is 2.1%. I mean, these things... These things add up. If you then add a 5% merit increase and another bonus next year in January, you are talking about substantially increasing. The same for the Public Works guys. These are the departments we're having the problems. Chris, a couple of years ago, you asked for an hourly increase for your people because you weren't able to hire. The same kinds of things can come to the board when there's problems. I would expect it to come to the board and not sit and fester. Anybody disagrees with me, please say so. But, you know, it's like, these are hard times and we've got to get creative. And I want the money to go to the departments that need it and where we're having the problems.
David, is there anything? Go ahead.
Yeah, of course. No, no, I'm not saying you don't approach the town manager and have internal meetings to do it.
Meeting, and just, if I'm wrong, I'm sorry. That's my opinion only.
No, no, I'm not saying you don't approach the town manager and have internal meetings to do it. I'm saying, these kinds of things then can be brought to the board, how to try to do these things. I'm not saying you have to come to us directly. I'm saying, town manager can lay these things on the table for discussion and decision.
But this is before a little dip, so it's a different, that's about that. I don't know if it's good, it's pretty tough, but-
It's a tight labor market, any time. From police to maintenance workers, you know, the carpenters, you know, it's just a tight workforce, you know? And we're, you know, we can't do so much, you know? You see what I'm saying?
David, what a, you said that January, if they were, Jeremy, could get people by-
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
If we could get people in the PD or in the Public Works by September and give them a, an additional $750, $750 each, $750 bonus. It's not like a signing bonus. I mean, if they're, they're here and working, they get it. Everybody would get it that was working as of September 1st. So is that, was that, is that something that we couldn't do? Is there a reason we couldn't do that?
I'm confused. I think it's that different than what Pat said as far as the date on the bonus?
The first thing I said was, anybody who's here September 1st would be eligible to get the bonus in January, as long as they did an acceptable job.
That's the second piece. That's the second piece.
The first bonus-
When I raised the, when I raised the signing bonus, it was, it was an idea of the kinds of things to consider when we're really having these problems, and we're not, we're not the only place that's faced with this. I've read things about increasing overtime compensation. I've read things about signing bonuses, retention bonuses. I mean, it, it's, it's, these are internal discussion things to come up with what can work. And again, bring it to the board if it needs a policy change or more money. But I, I can throw all these things out here, that these are ways that you might try to do it. But I will tell you, giving two bonuses, paying hourly 50 cents more an hour, and a 5% merit raise, merit pool, it adds up to a substantial raise for the police department and the Public Works guys. Go ahead.
That 5% merit pool you're talking about, is that saying that you're caring, thinking they will get 5%?
That's up to the manager how it's dealt with. That's, I have no say over that, you know that. The board does not control the merit, the merit raises that are given. It is a merit pool that is management's decision how to handle.
To the, I don't know if this addresses specifically the bonuses. Let's just say that that's a $2,000 bump for the officers that exist in the police department. I'm going to single out the police department with blinders on for the other folks. That still doesn't get, doesn't get past the fact that the Sheriff's Department's starting salary is $8,000 to $10,000 more than our starting salary. So if we're competing with a BLET graduate, and this just happened to us, even if we're, the delta went from $8,000 to $10,000 between our starting salary to $6,000 to $8,000 between our starting salary and the Sheriff's Department. And I think that, that's still an issue. I don't, I don't think it does that issue much, much for that issue.
We've discussed this before, and I agree with you, David. Point before has always been that at the county level, they have a lot more territory and more complexity, but it's always been there in front of us, that the county is going to pay more. Again, if there has to be something special done for the police force with an all-new restructure, I would, I would assume that this would be an internal discussion and a proposal to the board. But I, I know, I followed the county budget, I went to the county budget meeting. I know how they are focusing on certain departments, because they, basically, they need the people. So I'm just trying to provide an answer of how to better structure a pay increase right now. If there needs to be a whole departmental shift, I think that has to come to us as a departmental shift.
Jeremy, if you, if you said that across the board of the United States, there's a 20% deficit in hiring for all police departments, right?
Pretty much, yes.
So even with this raise, if you think that you're not going to be able to fill those two positions, would it be beneficial for you to take those two positions, hire a person with detective abilities that can also act as an officer as well when they're not doing those other duties? Would that help you out in any way?
Yes and no. And I'll tell you, I still think patrol is the bread and butter for it. Detective is brutal if you need it, but we have to fill in patrol. I mean, that's, that's my opinion.
What is the raise that you think you need? I mean, I just, I mean, just number of thousands of dollars?
I don't know. I mean, like you said, this is something I would need to discuss with the town manager, and I haven't. I would tell you, just from the numbers that I've done, and I'm still waiting on a few agencies that haven't gotten back in, but we're $2,000 to $4,000 behind every other local PD, and then about $8,000 behind Sheriff's Office. I just, we can't keep up with Sheriff's Office. I get that. The local PDs, though, I do think we should be keeping up with them.
I do too.
And if we're $2,000 or $4,000 behind them, then I think our starting salary needs to go $2,000 or above where it's at. And then, as they were saying, there's actually a few of our employees who are not making starting salaries, so they would need to get bumped as well. But then you get into the fact of compression, because we literally have 10- to 12-year officers who are not making much more than that, and you bump everybody else up unless they go as well, then you're going to have 2-year officers making the same thing, bumping up.
And I guess, here's where I'm a bit confused, because that was the point of the MAPS recommendation, that the board accepted and approved to try and reduce the compression. And as I recall, we increased the salary base town-wide by some $85,000 with the idea we were reducing compression. And that was only two and a half years ago?
And right now, it's not compressed. But again, when you bring the bottom of the ladder, listen, everything else, when you, when you're down that, that sense of world.
Hey, Jeremy, how many employees? Please, four?
We have over a lot, eleven.
How many, how many are working right now?
Right now, we have eight, one.
You've got eight?
Yes.
I'm going to put my two cents worth in, if I may. I've thought a lot about it, not just this year, but looking in the past. I think you're looking at a half a cent on the tax rate to get us anywhere. If you take a half a cent at our tax rate, that's what I think that you're talking about overall, to get the police department reasonably competitive on the local basis and still remain non-competitive with the Sheriff's Department.
I'd like to see, I know your percentage was 2% on the 50 cent. I'd like to see a dollar on the hourly people. You've got to come somewhere in the middle of CPI and inflation, and I think we need to be pushing 10%. Just my opinion.
And to clarify what I said, I'm not saying to do that. I'm just going to say that the funding is equivalent to-
I understood what you meant. It's like you've got to find half a penny somewhere.
Well, I mean, the main thing, we need to retain the officers that have been dedicated to the, to the town. I mean, they work, they need to stay, because at the rate we're going, they're leaving. And if we leave some of these, police officers that have been here, our Public Works officers that have been here forever, you know, dedicated to the town, we have, you know, we have to keep those, because they're not coming back, as well as getting new employees. But we can't hire a new employee that's making the same thing as somebody that's been here for 10 years. That doesn't make sense.
Is, is Brian, should with a dollar an hour, would that not cover everybody all the way up?
It should, yes. But that's, all I'm saying is, we need to address the starting salary, but then everybody else is going to-
Everybody is. Everybody's going to-
Again, whether it's 50 cents or a dollar, that was just for every hourly employee as of, as of July 1st. Their salaries move up. I mean, I'm glad to hear other people that are proposing-
Well, I've thought about just, you know, do the fact that to try to get some more officers on duty as soon as possible, that, you know, we could give them the dollar and everybody else 50 cents. But then again, you look at Chris and how hard his guys work, I don't see why in the world we would not want to do the same.
You got to, you have to do that department, in fact.
Yes, sir.
I think that, that would be a lot more, do better than saying, look, people, in front of, that dollar an hour, actually, when they retire, they have to retire soon to the bonus, when they retire, doesn't mean they're retiring, it's a league. I think that-
Well, could we not still do the bonus et cetera, January 1st?
I want to remind everybody that whenever you talk about a dollar, I'm not arguing against it, but I'm just saying, as an employer, that dollar is not a dollar.
I know, I know. It has FICA, you've got retirement, you've, you've got 401K, I understand that. I know that.
And the high-end budget.
So-
What do you think? I know what it is, being a woman in the public, I started here for $10,000, $4,900 and a half. And I think that was 100 years ago either. I'm not the hell of a-
I like the, I like the idea of the dollar increase. I think that'll, that'll help you get closer to where you need to be, help everybody in the same direction, not take anybody out. But the $750 bonus, again, you know, we, I think everybody's been kind of, in my opinion, underpaid, and that would help get everybody back, especially as, it took $5.39 I paid for gas yesterday, so.
Again, as I said-
$4.39.
He offered a dollar.
If, if-
You buy these from-
Five, five thirty-nine. Again, if we would have, if I would have known last fall that inflation was going to continue the way it is all year, I'd have, I'd have fought for more than 750. I'd have come to all of you guys and been pitching $1,000 or $1,500 if I'd known that. Because I had to get all of your buy-in on this, and we were all thinking things were going to calm down. So, you know, I'm, I'm trying to give people money in their pocket right now that I wish we would have given them earlier, but we were hoping. And, but the January idea is, again, hedging against inflation, because what they're saying today isn't particularly great, and it's a kind of a way for retention, but also, thanks for the hard year, because we're coming up on the hard part of the year, and in January, to have some money, you know, as that is another bonus to everybody.
No, that's no. You know, Carl rode at the Cinco Station yesterday. It was $5.39 at the Cinco. Everybody gets a rope.
I'd do the dollar and the other.
What does that do? Yes, what we're at.
It's $2,200 for starting salary police officer, which is still over on every other police partner.
What'd you calculate that on?
One dollar.
The dollar?
Mm-hmm, one dollar.
What, did you add the 5% merit?
I just added, just the dollar.
See, I think we're all hopeful that that's across the board. On top of the dollar.
And again, if you could, we could get somebody in here by September 1st, it's not a signing bonus, but they would be eligible for another $750 first of the year. So, you know, that, that kind of adds a little to the, you don't call it a sign, it's only to be across the board, everybody, but they would be part of that pool. And then the 5% merit, like, we just say that is at the, that is at the town manager's discretion.
So we're, if I did the math, you're like $1.2 million in salaries, so you're talking about, close to 10%, so you're talking $120,000. And that's just off the table. Stand corrected, sir.
Yeah, I, I correct, I calculated all the salaries, pulled them all out, and came up with $1.5 million for last year roughly. Because you find salaries in different places.
So, can I, can I recap what I heard just? Okay, so what I, what I heard is $750 bonus now, for who? Just the hourly employees or all employees?
Everybody who's been performing satisfactorily gets $750 before the end of the year, just like we did in December.
End of the fiscal year.
End of the fiscal year, yes, end of this fiscal year.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Then, one July, a dollar increase for non-exempt employees?
All the hourly's.
Seventeen, yes.
Yeah. Dollar an hour.
And then seven, come one January, not certain yet to be trigger pulled by the commissioners as they would determine, or would you want to go ahead and commit? We'd have to budget for, one, one January, $750 bonus for all?
Anybody performing acceptable, who's been with us as of September 1st.
Okay. And then, 5% merit pool for all. Is that the consensus of the board? Okay. Now, oh, and, and the cost of that is the, is the, is to delete the detective's position.
And the body cams.
And the body cams.
For this year.
For this year, for this fiscal year.
John, I understand you're saying, David, that-
Well, I, I, I wasn't finished saying yet, but, but just realize that those fundings are in different funds, all right? And the deletion of the detective and the body cam is only going to free that revenue up in the general fund. But, and, you know, we'll, we'll rack that up and see what it is. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Just one clarification. For example, the maintenance department, what's going to cover that additional expense? Are you, because what I'm hearing, I guess, is detective is gone and the cameras are gone. Does that create enough money to cover the rest of the staff?
Without, without running it, I don't know.
When I did the calculation, it 50 cents an hour plus the bonuses plus a 5% merit, I was coming in, I think, right at about 8% increase over last year's salary budget, okay? So by adding another 50, I think you're, you're still going to be within the 10.4% that was being recommended. Remember, what was being recommended was 7.4 COLA, 3% merit. So I think it's still going to be within that. If it's not, it's going to be pretty close.
Until he crunches the numbers, you don't know.
That sounds reasonable. I mean, it, it sounds reasonable.
Well, as far as the PD, what about the, the salary PD?
We can't leave him by, are you?
They have, they have two $750 bonuses- They have a, they have two seven hundred and fifty dollar bonuses and a five percent increase, merit increase. I understand it, this is a tough situation, but, you know, five percent merit, there are ways of playing with it to give more to some and less to another.
Well, when we get through this discussion, I think it's critically important that we do a good, good job in communicating to the public that this really is just a rearrangement of the funds and not spending additional funds. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, cause we're basing it at ten point four. I think Scott had something he wanted to add.
Yes, sir.
I'm sure, Paul, you're talking about, are you putting bonuses in on the percentage? The bonus is the one shot.
No, the one dollar an hour and the five percent, okay. I can take, I can take one of your public service tax, fifty cents an hour was a two point eight percent pay increase. So a dollar an hour is gonna be five point six percent. Then there is a five percent merit increase pool, okay? Those two together are salary. All I'm saying is a seven hundred and fifty dollar bonus represents two point one percent of his annual salary. So it's, it's on top of it. I'm not, I'm not saying that becomes part of the salary, but it's an, it's, okay?
For simple minds like mine, if someone is getting twenty thousand dollars a year, my simple mind, what, what does that mean? How much more money am I gonna make?
A dollar an hour is a little, is two thousand eighty dollars a year increase for any hourly employee?
For, no.
Isn't it?
For non-police officers, cause police officers are twenty-one eighty-four. So it's two thousand eighty for a forty-hour employee, it's twenty-one eighty-four for a police department.
I think Frank had a question.
What, did I finish getting my answer?
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I'll come back to you, Frank.
If they were making twenty thousand and they get a dollar an hour raise, they're gonna make twenty-two thousand eighty dollars if they're not in the police force.
Total, including everything.
Just, no, without the merit, that's just from the one dollar increase.
Okay, but I'm trying, I'm trying to get an understanding with the whole.
It's about twenty percent more. The, the taxes, tax.
About four grand.
What, what I call the taxes, tags, and title on.
Are you, so you're, twenty percent is about four thousand bucks.
I usually program about twenty percent when I'm spitballing.
Are we all understanding and agreeing that that number ballpark is right?
Luckily, everybody's making more than thirty thousand, but.
Okay, so they add another half, that's five thousand, is that right? Six thousand?
Thirty thousand dollars, take five, if they get a five percent merit, that's fifteen hundred, right? Right. And then they would make an extra two thousand eighty from a one dollar an hour increase. So you're talking, you're talking.
Let's talk that through. Let's talk that through. Because the one dollar an hour employee raise, that would go into effect one July.
Correct.
Right? So the merit raise, your evaluation is done on your anniversary date, and that varies throughout the year. So the five percent merit is gonna be calculated on the increased by two thousand dollar salary. It's, so it's a, it's a cumulative effect.
And all I'm saying is that within the fiscal year, it will happen. It's not, it all happens as of July first. Is Erica next door?
So sticking with the twenty thousand dollar person theoretically, or the thirty thousand, whichever one you want to calculate on. So the twenty thousand is a four thousand dollar difference? Okay.
Right.
Alright. What, oh, I lost it. Okay.
Jeremy, do you think that would, what we're proposing here would help you possibly find and retain some, the two open positions?
It won't hurt.
Yes. Well, that's what, that was, that was the way I would have answered it myself.
I wish I could sit here and tell you one hundred percent confidence that this is, I don't know, it won't hurt, it's, um, it definitely helps. I don't like it, it's, I don't know what the answer is, it's basically wrong.
And I'm just gonna raise again that we have over the last five years been really firm to maintain the insurance split that the, that, that the town has, and we, we are the best municipality around for, for the health insurance. So it's, it's that extra little card to play.
Yes, sir, Mr. Clem.
I have a guy that we hired in October, he went, uh, six months, about, but the day, same day for six months, he had a long, he had a period. He woke up to the three days a week, he said, he just worked this right here, he's bored. But he hope he didn't leave me in a bind.
Say that again.
I said, I had a guy who we hired in October, and he lasted six months, they'll be on a three days a week trip on a Friday. And we wanted to talk to him, he had a lot of hard feelings, he just worked that time, then we can go on, we can be more than this. And I will say that I did have a few old real employees like my club, that, that we need to only get and recruit some good people, of course. And you ain't gonna be here forever.
Nope.
I appreciate anything that you can do to, 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 to. I have, uh, one more thing to say, is I do remember back in the day, we started dating, so every time the word talks to me, I'd come up. But that, no, no, that was just rewarding people that they were bored. My, my saying was, if they didn't think they were bored, they would be a lot harder, and then you'd be on the road.
Alright, back to you, sir.
I have a question, because I was, I was, got lost in the, for some reason, separation of the lieutenant and the deputy. We have a crisis with our salaries regardless of the classification. My counterpart, as an example, and I'm not asking you this about money, is twenty thousand dollar difference in charge for the department. They have the same number of years of experience. He's been there as long as I may be. And I just, I want to put that out there, that you're gonna create pressure, and I, I, I think you're, you may be flawed in making the separation.
Cause you're looking at all of your salary employees here, so, I mean, that's, us and a couple of more are what you're taking out of that equation. So I'm not sure from morale how that would go for your department heads, but.
Well, everybody would get the bonus now and in January, as well as a five percent merit rate.
You're gonna be putting the sergeant and the lieutenant this close to each other. I was just looking at their numbers.
Is there no formula to move those brackets up as necessary for everybody? And as, I know the MAP study says you got between A and B, and this is what they should make, but that, quite frankly, three years ago, that's not what we're talking about today, so.
That's why we looked at the COLA and the merit this year, cause we were also looking at increasing the pay ranges, so it would be across the board. So it's, it would bring everybody here up, but it would also bring our minimum part up.
Mr. Clem.
Well, I know one is one, but as far as the pay scale and cap, uh, cost of living went up three percent every year for five years. Wasn't that, if that pay scale turned up that three years, every, every, every year?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Yeah.
That's what I was, I was, I was.
I knew that's.
The base value for five years, you can sum all that up with track, you know, I mean, it's about a day.
When I was getting younger, two months ago, those islands figured the cost of living down. They wrote their policy, saying that July one, every year, their cost of living is automated based on social security's cost of income.
Five point nine percent this year.
Everything. It slides to base scale in every current authority.
Well, I'm just gonna use CPI, and sometimes it's next to nothing, and this year it's extremely high. And I don't, why would it not adjust on some, some fashion like that?
Well, that's the seven point four we took. That was the December number of CPI, which is, uh, there was a COLA survey done by the league this year, and pretty much what it came down to is towns our size are giving COLAs in the amount between zero and fifteen percent, with the average of four point seven in our area. And it's basically four point seven is the same for the East Coast too, but we just took the number of the CPI this year, which was the seven point four as of December. Actually, no, we were looking at it the other day, it's up to eight point eight nine, and we just, I mean, it continues to go up. That's, we didn't just pull that number out of nowhere.
And the social security COLA, which is issued in October, five point nine percent this year, I'm sure it's gonna be at least that when they report it in October again. I understand what you're saying. The thing is, we don't have a policy. And that might be something that has to happen, is there has to be a policy, but then we haven't seen inflation like this since the seventies, early eighties. So it's kinda not been, not, not, not been as high on everybody's radar screen because a three percent merit increase was kinda covering inflation for the last several years.
Well, is it fair to say that everyone in this room expects the rate of increase of everything to increase even further? I mean.
I would say so.
I mean.
That's what the seven hundred and fifty is about. I, I was, I was employed in the seventies when we were giving, we were giving raises every six months, I admit it, because the inflation was so crazy. I remember that. I remember that. I don't know how they budgeted for it, but, uh, that was, that's what that extra seven hundred and fifty in January is trying to do, is to play a hedge.
I think it's great what you're doing. I think I was just making Frank's point is not all of us, I mean, I don't make a large amount of salary. Daniel makes far less than I do.
I understand.
The salary people don't make a lot of money either. So it, it, inflation is hitting us just as hard as it did everybody else, is I'm sure what Frank was trying to say.
Well, it's just a mere fact that you just said you can go to a neighbor in town, make twenty thousand dollars more. This is like an employee retention thing. It's, it's almost, it's almost dire straits, and I'm not.
The jobs are coming across, the lift serve like crazy now. Any of these people can go anywhere right now in this room. That's all I'm saying. And these are the people that are here for you twenty-four seven, so I would just think about that.
We're not trying to leave anybody out here, I promise you. I don't think, I think the board's, we, we, we need to move everybody. Now, I don't know who's in charge of moving somebody up within their pay scale, but it's not me.
Well, what it normally is, is he put, David will propose that budget, so last year, I think, was a three percent. So it's up to three percent, and then we have a formula. The department heads do rate, or evaluations on everybody. We take the formula and we give a percentage of the three percent based on the evaluation. So that's how it's typically moved.
That's, that's the personnel side of it, but the classifications don't, don't move, haven't moved.
Yeah, that's right.
And both things need to happen in this case.
Where, I put a little club, but it's, I was a lot newer than you are, I've been here for a little bit. When I first started here, July fourth, um, first of July, you always count on usually five percent cover. Usually, also that year, you got a two and a half percent merit raise. You got basically seven and a half percent here. That was really good. It went like that for about two or three years, and then it went for a five, six, seven years where you got one, maybe two percent. All that come down, everybody else is going up. We're way behind. And that's where the problem lies, is in, in past years, there was nothing. I got guys that started out now, that were, it's a myth, a long time before I made fifteen, you know, I put half, better than half a microbrew to get what they make. Yeah, it puts a sore spot on everybody's, I mean, I just, I think y'all need to consider that, I mean, it is. Yeah, it kept up.
I, I, I don't think anybody in this room has been here less than twelve years. I, everybody.
You got seven and a half percent, and then you went, we went a long time, I'm sorry, we. That's where we're wrong. And now, just, I believe.
Well, with the dollar an hour raise for the salaried employees, what would that equate to for the?
Thousand forty dollars piece.
I mean, what would that be?
I, I didn't hear your question, Rick, I'm sorry.
To, to, to equal out, as you say, keep everybody moving up equally, whether it's exempt or non-exempt, what would the difference be for the, the salary? What percentage would they have?
The, 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 uh, the work, the work week, forty hour, is calculated for everybody on a forty-hour work week that are non-police officers. The police officer's, uh, work week, or yearly, uh, hourly, years, by year, is two thousand one hundred and eighty-four. Uh, all other employees are two thousand and eighty. So a dollar in the salary line for cops is two thousand one hundred and eighty-four. Everybody else is two thousand and eighty. That's just the salary line. Then, you know, the, the, uh, what I would use my rule of thumb is the twenty percent for your FICA and your, all the other cabbage accounts that go with that. Um, it is on top of that. So a, a dollar, a dollar for an hourly employee that's not a police officer is, is, is the same amount of increase for, um, exempt employees. Cause for purposes of calculating salaries, even though they may work a hundred hours in a week, they're calculated two thousand and eighty hours. Did that answer your question?
Not exactly. And in other words, what would we have to, to raise the, the salaried people's percentage wise to equal what we're giving the hourly people?
No, it wouldn't be, it's just give them all a, the equivalent of a dollar an hour raise, which would be, for a police exempt, would be an additional two thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Actually, for, uh, Jeremy and Frank are figuring it at the same amount as the twenty eighty, cause their salary. These, yeah, these two are twenty eighty also, but everybody else is twenty.
So each salary person would get an, an increase of two thousand and eighty.
I'll agree with that. I mean, I, that, that would make it fair across the board. And I would want it to make it fair across the board. But we, we are gonna have to, to give our departments the ability to, to bring people on to fill empty positions and retain the ones we have. We, we, we need to make a, a move.
If I'm understanding Frank correctly, the raise, the way it's going, the hourly employees are coming up closer to what you as an exempt is making, is that what you're saying?
If you did the dollar, everybody moves at the same rate. And the thing is, you need to apply that dollar to the base scale. But again, that twenty percent, basically, you're talking about two thousand dollars per body unit. That is not an incentive for retention. Based on the percentage that you're being recovered. I think you may be better off back at the town manager's investment percentage to, to be able to retain the twenty-plus year employees you got now.
Right, so we're benefiting new employees coming in, but we're not benefiting, to me, it sounds like, I may be wrong, but it's not, we're not benefiting people who've been here for fifteen, twenty years. That's what I'm getting, is that?
Um, again, if you go and you look at the public works and patrol officer salaries, and seven point four, and you think in terms of dollars, and you do seven point four, I'm gonna go back to, we have nine exempt employees. I'm gonna go back to, we have nine exempt employees. That 7.4% COLA is $44,000, and the other 17 employees get $42,500. Do the division, do the... It's not... Everybody makes the same. But you are basically... Nine employees are getting more than half of the COLA dollars. That's what I am trying to... That's the problem with just doing a straight COLA when you have the disparity in salaries that we have. So, you know, again, I don't disagree with add the equivalent of a dollar an hour for all of the exempts to keep the split from narrowing. I understand that. But there needs to be... Again, we just had a MAP study done three years ago that was used to set what these ranges are that were based on a regional assessment of like versus like. I'd also put in that we should do another... We should do another MAPS, do another classification-based study in not this fiscal year, but the next one. Because obviously, everything with the way things are going is really messed up. I think that has to happen, and maybe we need to pull it into this year to have it done again because of... Or do you wait for another year of a mess and do it in the following year? But we need another MAPS study within that five-year window that they recommend it, which would have been not this fiscal year, the next one.
Frank?
I understand that at the beginning, Pat, you give everybody 7.4, which is probably 96,000. Is that what I heard you do?
It must have been...
Forty-four thousand.
Because it was...
Forty-two and forty-two.
It was 44 and 42 and a half.
Right. By taking the camera and the detective out, put $160,000 back into the budget.
You put that money back into the general fund budget.
General fund. We got other things to take care of, too. I'm not done... We got other things to take care of, too. But...
Is there a percentage, again, for the salaried employees that would equal the same as the dollar for the...
I would simply do the dollar. Do the equivalent... It's a $2,080 increase to their salaries, which is the equivalent of a dollar. So everybody gets the equivalent of a dollar an hour more, whether they are hourly or salary. Salary exempt is, they say that it's based on 40 hours, but really, you're to be here as much as necessary. Been there, done that. You have to...
Yeah, that's a terrible thing to say, but we're giving them $40, and that is less than 10 gallons of gas. I'm a simple man with a simple mind.
I don't know what to say about gasoline, again. It unfortunately drives so many people's lives, and that's not meant to be a pun. But we're all eating it. And it cannot keep going up the way it is forever. I lived in Europe where... I lived in Europe in 2009. We were paying the equivalent of $8 a gallon, because that's... They don't subsidize stuff. So I understand what it means to have these kind of gasoline prices. It hurts.
I would just ask everybody to be fair. We have some valuable people sitting out here. It's bad times all over the country. And we're talking somewhere around 10% if it flushes out like it's supposed to. Of course, the 5% is not in our hands. But... And that's not enough, in my opinion, because of what inflation has got now. I would just caution to be fair to everybody. The hourly people, I couldn't get anybody for what you guys have to hire people to drive a nail on my job site. And that's... I'm not lying. They tell you what to do, actually. They come to work when they want, and they do what they want, and they still get paid.
Would they... Would a 5% salaried increase plus a 5% merit, would that work out to be about the same?
So what you're saying is... Is hourly employees would get a dollar an hour more, and then salaried employees would get a 5% increase? I didn't follow that.
5% plus the 5% of the 5% merit?
I mean, that's 10%.
Which is pretty close to where we were at with the 7.4.
David, I want to ask you. We have people listening online right now.
Yes, sir.
And I'm sure there's some people out there that don't understand the application and definition of the 5% merit. Can you give a brief summary of how that works?
Yeah, a merit performance salary increase is based on how well an employee performs in executing their duties. So the 5% of merit performance, if some... There's a process that we go through on different categories of work that's in the employee's job description. The department head makes an evaluation, shares that with me, and basically scores them on that 5% scale as to what they have earned in terms of performance for that last performance period.
The point that I was wanting to make sure that...
Not automatic.
That's what I wanted to make sure the general public understood.
Some have received less than whatever was budgeted as for a merit raise in a particular year. Some have received a full merit raise.
All right, what's your pleasure? Where are we going here?
As I understand where we are right now, the two $750 are there. The dollar an hour for hourly is there. The 5% merit is there. And the question is for our salaried people. And what was put on the table was, give them the equivalent of a dollar an hour at this point to keep everybody moving forward in their range at a similar amount. And while I know it's not gonna make everybody happy, but it's, to me, still trying to give the hourly, which is really mainly the police and public works. And let's not forget our admins, who do an awful lot to keep things straight and are essentially at the bottom end of pay. Giving them the larger percentage than the salary, but the salaried people are still gonna get $2,080 bump because it's a dollar an hour. And there's a 5% merit, and there's two $750 bonuses, all factored into this. So the salary's going up 2,080, plus your merit raise of what is... Whatever's determined of the 5%. I'd like people to be able to eat and keep a roof over their head.
Okay. Are we at the point that we can move ahead for discussion? You're not gonna vote on this now, but just to put this in place for future discussion and consideration and finalization of...
This is the last budget workshop. That's the... This is the last budget workshop.
Well, and what...
Let me hold this chair. Okay. But what I'm trying to ask, or trying to state, is that you're finished talking about this, and this is your final decision. But it could possibly change as you go further through the rest of the budget, right? I mean, what if you find something in here? Are you telling the chair that you want to vote and stamp this, and this is cast in stone for the new budget? This portion of it? Is that what you're saying?
I started, in my opinion, I started the discussion where I thought was the most important thing to get started with. I mean, I've looked at... I have looked at the whole budget. There are a few other things. But this was what I thought was the most important to start with. I am happy to not do anything until we go through the whole budget if somebody else has something else that they think is even more critical to settle first.
I'm just trying to get the order of how you want to proceed with the budget. I mean, y'all tell me. I don't... I'm not gonna say I care less, but I'm just trying to procedurally move ahead. If you're forever through with this part, fine. We'll go on to another part. But I'm just assuming that you were through with this discussion, putting it on the table as part of the final discussion. Y'all tell me. I don't know. I'm just trying to figure out how to run the meeting. If we're through talking about salaries, fine. That's fine. I just need to... Are you gonna vote on parts of it as we go, or are you gonna vote on all of it at the end?
Vote on all of it at the end.
Let's continue all the rest of the budget.
You got to get the exact numbers run. But you got to put it all together. You see what I'm saying? We can't vote on it today. You know, we need to...
Schedule another special meeting or something between now and the...
Yeah, you vote on the ordinance. Right, that's right, Brian. Or that's right, Gerald. We vote on the ordinance, so...
Just a special. And everybody, it seems like everybody's kind of on the same page here for right now.
On this part of it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Monsieur, what were you... Before I interrupted you?
I just wanted to get one clarification that I need to make sure for when I go and do the reciphering on this. And in the interest of belaboring the specifics, got a $750 bonus now in this current budget year. $750 bonus in the upcoming budget, 1 January, and that is for all.
Anybody who's been here as of September 1st and has performed satisfied?
All employees. 5% merit pool for all. But to what Mr. Smith said, there's a conflict between the dollar an hour... A dollar an hour for all employees and what Mr. Smith said for 5% for the exempt employees. If I could get that clarified, I think that I'm good with what I can do the math on.
I would stick to the $2,080 addition to our salaried employee salaries starting July 1st. That's the equivalent of what... That means everybody is getting essentially the same amount bump in their salary as of July 1st, whether they are hourly or salary.
I just need that clarified as far as what the board needs to do.
Board?
That would... I guess that would be the simplest way to do it, percentage-wise. I don't know what that percentage would be.
Okay. I understand.
I follow that same thought. If Jeremy hires a police officer, and at the time that this adjustment comes due, if Jeremy hires a police officer, patrol officer in mid-July, does that automatically put that new hire in line for the same increase?
Here's the issue with that. The hiring range is hired at the beginning salary of the classification range. That employee is eligible for a probationary increase of 5% at the completion of this probationary period, which is one year for the police officers. So if he hires an officer 15 July, I would think that the only thing that that employee would be eligible for is the 1 January bonus. I mean, somebody...
But he would hire in at the hourly...
Existing...
The $1 higher base?
No, because what you've done is you've done the personnel side of it, but you haven't adjusted the classification plan. Now, that... I think that that is an easy fix, if that's what the board would like to do. I can do that administratively, you know, fixing the classification ranges, if you tell me to do that.
But you need to... Are you gonna use social security? Are you gonna use the social security COLA number to do that?
Well, but the question was, was am I gonna slide it a dollar an hour on the low range?
Oh, yeah, right.
And if you want me to do that, if you want me to use social security, if you want me to use CPI, you know, y'all tell me what to do. We had done the calculations basically on the CPI. That's what we've done. But again, for the reasons of compression, we didn't pull the trigger on that. But since you're moving all three, you're moving the employee in the middle. And if you apply the CPI to the starting salaries, which is the classification plan, and the ending salaries, the classification plan, in effect, you're moving all three things at the same time, which is what you should do, or what needs to be done in this case. Is that imperfect? Will it cause issues? I don't know, but it seems like a... To me, anyway, right now, that it seems like a better set of circumstances than what we have right at the moment. It will produce a better set of circumstances than what we got at the moment. So if y'all want me to use CPI to move the classification, social security number, you know, dollar an hour, whatever you want me to do. I would think that something that is fairly standard and... Gosh, I hate to rely on the federal government for anything, but, you know, that may be the best way to approach it.
It ought to be some kind of understanding that that's how we move those pay scales year after year after year, so you're not having the same discussion.
We can do that, but the actual personnel policy says that you have to approve it. You guys can change that and make it automatic every year so that we just go in and do it.
But that's just... To me, it's common sense.
We can bring that back.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know. I'm just a contractor, but...
Well, you know, as the...
It is what it is. I mean, if...
Why don't you use social security?
I don't know what to use, but somebody has figured it out before.
Use social security.
Just back up and use social security for the years since we had the plan. This year, like I said, it's 5.9. October, I expect they're gonna give us another big number.
Okay, so what I'm getting is that for this exercise, and for this year, what we'll do is we'll do that adjustment based on the social security thing. And then for the years going forward, from a policy standpoint, we'll put... We'll bring something back to the board to amend the personnel policy that says that's what we're gonna use.
Well, what I was saying is go back to when we set those numbers, when we got them.
Right.
Back to the social security increase each year, and then this year is 5.9, so... Back to the social security increase each year, and then this year is 5.9, so.
I'll have to look at that, that might, that might.
Make it worse, yeah, yeah. Maybe we should just start with right now.
Start with right now.
Okay. I, I, I think I got enough guidance there, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay, we ready to move on to something else? What do you want to move on to?
We already went sorry to Jeremy with the detective and body cam expense, and, okay? Um, I wanna talk about the one, over 1.1 million dollars that is being taken out of the, um, the sand fund, that with no explanation, that sand fund is for sand on the beach. Um, we discussed this last year, if 800,000 of that is for the Army Corps of Engineers study, the Army Corps Engineers study is not sand on the beach. I don't know what the other portion of it is for, because it wasn't explained.
So, 1.1 is of, of your 1.3 debt service for Central Reach, it was sand on the beach, it's 1.1 of that sand. Because you don't have any money left to pay.
It would have been nice to have known over the past several months that we had no fund balance to take, um, because the questions that were being asked about being able to write checks to cover things, um, there was no indication given that we were basically going negative in fund balance. So... This is, I'm just gonna say this is not a good situation. What is the, I, I'm sorry, looking at the sheet again, how much is, how much is available for fund balance appropriation from the general fund?
Got, uh, 3,020,447 dollars is, uh, the excrement, which is right at 72%.
We have a 40 to 7, 70% target, as I recall. Our minimum is 40, we, we're 40 to 70.
Mm-hmm.
Can you?
Yes, ma'am.
We were originally using two cents of, when central reach came in, we were using two cents of tax money from the general fund, as I recall, towards central reach, and the rest was coming out of B part. Do we still have that, can we still do that so that the general fund pays the equivalent of two cents for paying off the central reach, and the sand fund covers the rest? I want that sand fund to stay there, that's where we're gonna get, that's where we're gonna get the money to do dredging when it, we're not doing dredging this year, I see, but it will come back the year after. And if we do end up having to pay interest on the revolving loan for the FEMA sand, that would legitimately come out of that fund.
You had about three questions there, Pat.
Yeah.
Can you, would you mind re, read?
Originally, when we started all at the beginning, we were using two cents, I think, of, of, uh, property tax, and the rest from B part to cover central reach. Do we have that kind of money in general fund that we can use and take the rest out of the sand fund without depleting our general fund too much, 'cause I don't know how much else might pop up that we're gonna need general fund money for?
Um, well, you've got, uh, 70% fund balance and two cents on the tax rate? Is that what you're saying, you were using two cents? At that particular time, um, it was about 120,000 dollars per, uh, a penny, it's probably 130. Um, so that, let's just use a quarter million dollars, as, as far as, you know, two cents for discussion. Um, if, if that's what you are asking, um, can you, can you transfer 250,000 dollars to pay for a piece of the central reach project? Of course, that's gonna have a corresponding effect on, on fund balance available. And just, uh, real quickly, um, what that's going to do is that's probably gonna bring your fund balance down to 60%. I'm spitballing here, 'cause you gotta remember that you have to, uh, whatever the appropriation is, is really a twofold hit, because now that becomes an expense, which is, it hits your denominator and your numerator in the fund balance calculation. So, it's really a 500,000 dollar swing in the equation. Uh, so, that said, 60% fund balance, I mean, it's 60% fund balance.
Well, I just wanna make sure we're staying well above the 40, lower number.
Now, you, you, you could do that. I, I do think that, uh, you, you should at least register the fact that it's also proposed in the budget to, uh, finance the lift station upgrade at Greensboro Street, which, oh, by the way, is now, and would be, as the budget was presented, was, um, proposed as, to fund it with a loan. Now, that same project has been set forward by Congressman Rouser for 2.7 million dollars worth of federal funding to come in. Um, you know, how that may turn out, I don't know, but I, I do think that it is part of the, the stew here that you're, we've got to percolate on in order to consider how the fund balance may, um, impact the local government's commission approval of a loan, should the federal, uh, money not come through. So, anyway, I just lay that out there for consideration.
Mm-hmm.
The, the short answer to that is, is that should you want to move two pennies over, um, out of fund balance, uh, to the, pay the central reach project debt, um, that's gonna have a impact on your fund balance, but it's 60% and approximately, and within the goal says defined by the board's policy. Did I answer all three of your questions?
Mm-huh.
Okay. But, the, uh, that 250,000 dollar, uh, contribution is still going to limit your availability, uh, because, you know, your 460,000, uh, negative on fund balance. And that's, it's not gonna impact that. In the B part fund, excuse me.
Still within the range that we have to be, 40's on the low side, 70's on the high.
Mm-hmm.
As long as we stay within that. As long as we stay within that parameter, and we're on the higher side of that parameter, I think we should be okay.
Mm-hmm, what's next?
Okay, so which part?
If I could, if I could add, just make sure they got clarification, 'cause I was using round numbers, but Pat defined it as the equivalent of two cents.
Yeah.
Okay.
Two cents.
All right, Ms. Pat.
So that means that the Army Corps study is factored into B part? So, the fund balance is simply central reach? The, the, the transfer from Beach Inlet was all, it was everything that couldn't be covered?
That, yes, the Army Corps is basically coming from operating revenues.
Okay. When I went through, can we switch to B part? Because I just wanna confirm a few things, that, that in expenditures. Um, the professional services line, since the last, since the first budget workshop, uh, went up 30,000 dollars. Um, again, we don't.
What page are you on?
I'm sorry, I'm on page 14. I'm on page 14.
14, yeah.
Um, and we had asked for a, a complete split out of the professional services, um, what was under each professional services line, but I noted it went up 30,000 dollars compared to the first one. What was that for? First workshop? Uh, David's got that. And then the professional services beach went up 75,000 dollars compared to the first workshop. Thank you.
If, uh, you would turn to the second page of that handout. As illustrative of the, uh, professional services lines, um, as I communicated before, the, what we don't wanna do is, we don't wanna mix budget up with accounting. And this, uh, page two is an example, uh, from the general ledger of the line item in the general fund that's titled professional services. And there are a number of professional services that go against that, that line of vendors. So, in that one professional services line, for example, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight specific vendors that are tagged to that line. And to give you, and I, and I only use this to illustrate the, the issues created whenever there's an attempt to have the budget to reflect the, the accounting. So, if, if you go back to the first page, um, how we bill services are by fund. So, if you take Rick Green's, uh, who is one of the vendors under the professional services line in the governing body, if you take his run, since we bill the services for that particular vendor by fund, you can see that the vendor crosses all of the funds. So, he, you know, the attorney's services are billed in the governing body, um, is billed in water sewer, depending on what he does for the town, like billed in inspections, and then also in B part. So, to break out the, that vendor detail, one, it's not in accordance with the Fiscal Control Act, which says that you, you budget by function, and two, it's not, uh, in accordance with, uh, GAAP, the General, Generally Accepted Accounting Principles. Now, if there's a desire to see what, um, what a particular vendor, um, you know, is, is earned or been, been compensated for, and provide you with the, the list, if there's a desire to see what vendors are being paid for against a particular line item, these are the type of reports that can be provided to you. But to put that accounting information into budget is just, one, it's, it's, it's not appropriate to do that.
That's fine, David, but you don't.
Oh, but now the answer.
I can answer her question.
But I, well, for B, I'd like to.
I mean, that was the answer on the, why didn't you break the stuff out?
I do understand, but.
And then the increases, the, the increases, and I'll speak to the 30,000 dollar one, just because of that particular, um, uh, faux pas, if you will, we had actually broken out previously ATM contract services, uh, which is a, um, which is an example of, of doing exactly that. And what I did, I actually deleted that line and put it up in professional services on what we've done, done previously.
What I'm saying, David, is you have, in the general governing body expenses, you have 91, a little over 91,000 dollars for professional services. You arrived at that number somehow. If it's, if it's, town attorney is estimated at so much, I know that the audit is here is so much, if there's something else, what is the?
And that's what this list is here.
This is for this year?
No, I mean, but this is, this is exemplmatic of what we found this year.
How did you arrive at the 91,000?
We just used prior year experience on it.
Then how much is assumed for Richard Green total?
Well, since he's a new attorney.
Yeah.
That's still kinda up in the air, and the attorney's costs are always soft. It depends on how much trouble the town gets into, and how many, uh, phone calls that the commissioners make to them.
And projects.
And projects.
And then there's the audit, is there any other audit cost other than the cost of the Martin Starnes, Starnes audit?
Right.
In professional services?
Yes, that's the Thompson, Price, Scott, and Adams, along with the, um, Kavanaugh, McDonald Consulting. Those are the ones that produce the actuary tables for the retirement, uh, calculations that go into the audit.
And Pat, to answer your other question about professional services beach going up, 'cause he answered the ATM one moving to professional services, if you guys go to page 15 in your packet. If you'll notice from the first workshop that we had, the money that was put towards beach vegetation and sand fence has been removed.
I, that was my next question about when we weren't gonna do that this year?
Because, because the new information that we have, that they're probably gonna make us till and pick rocks at the end of the season, that money has instead been put in professional services beach for those purposes, and nothing.
Yeah, because I actually had that question, where those go, because traditionally, they're there every year.
They are, and it, we're gonna be no office to that, and so that money has been repercutated to that purpose, and those have been removed. Because with the project which doesn't count, the other part, the top part, I was.
With the project which doesn't count, the other parts of the beach, we just did a large vegetation planting as part of FEMA storm repair. Um, a, a storm would change that, but in the past, you guys have made accommodations for that on a storm basis. So, sand fence vegetation numbers went away where you had been presented last time, and they are now in professional services beach.
Thank you.
And. Tilling and rock.
Yeah. And, again, and we have no dredge budget, we have no dredge cost expected for Lockwood Folly this year.
The Army Corps of Engineers got O and M money, which we normally program about 83,000 in Lockwood Folly on the off year, and it is not our year to get the crossing, it goes to Oak Island. Um, so, we are not programming any money, 'cause the corps is supposed to take care of their own maintenance, is what we're hearing. And the, we got the crossing project this year.
So, fingers crossed it doesn't change, okay? Rothschild Davis Park, what is the budget for? The 40,000 budget for? Yeah, on page 15 again.
796.
So that's water for splash pad use. We always have to do ditch repair out there. And the bathroom clean, for that bathroom that happens during the summer does not get part of the public restroom. It gets part to that kind of contact.
Anything on the boat dock? Anything applicable to the boat dock? Any repairs or maintenance?
We do have to do repairs and maintenance for that. And we also buy equipment like when we have typical on this that go down out there. That, everything that's sourced through that part room from that lot.
Okay. And the 796 OVW, as I recall, was just, once the commissioners make a decision what the direction is, that is for creating a-
Engineering and consulting plan.
Engineering and construction plan. We, we were just covering why the, why sand fencing and planting went away.
And that's what I was going to ask about what the beach line was about. Did that explain?
Yeah, and that line also includes-
Before we added the change of moving the sand fence, so your previous workshop, it had 25,000 in it already. And that's for you to do if we get hit by a storm. It's one round of storm surveys to depth of closure and engineering analysis that we've seen with typical calls from friends. So you're prepared for one storm for that.
If we go back to the general fund stuff, as I call it, I see, David, that the ad val budget went down about 100,000. Is that, is that the rule about not being able to budget any more?
Collection rate.
Collection rate? Okay. Interest on savings and investment. Do we have an end of year payout that, that the 20, because right now when you see 574, you say?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but we, we haven't been making much.
I, I understand.
Any day I expect the bank to send us a bill for keeping our money.
Is, is 20, I'm just saying, is 20,000 an overestimation? Or you're thinking within, with, with interest rates going up, we may bounce back?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Blue can recycling. I'm seeing that maybe we haven't been as robust this year. Have we lost a lot of our customers that were recycling?
Pat, I, I think that we have as many customers. Is that, you're talking about the collection?
Yeah.
As of, I, I think that what we're seeing is people hadn't, hadn't been paying their bill.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and we have just last week talked to waste industries and we've sent out notices.
Okay.
To collect.
Just wanted to make, because I looked at it and said, wow, did we lose that many customers suddenly? You don't think so?
Just people aren't paying their bill.
Local sales and use tax, it, it went in the right direction. It went up considerably. I take it you got some data in that's pretty firm that, that, that we're going to be that much more than this year?
Yeah, local, local sales and use tax is one of those accrual distributions on a quarterly basis. So it, it actually lags two quarters. And, and that's, that's based on, on the league's straight up revenue projection estimates is where I rely on for that.
Okay. Off-street parking? Off-street parking is the one-
Where are, where?
I'm sorry, the next page.
Okay.
Page two. That's, that, that 23,000, that's the part of the parking revenue that the town can basically do whatever they want with, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Can that transfer then to B Park? Just for-
This is a, this is a revenue, okay?
Yeah. No, I know it's a revenue, so if, but is that money then available to do things in B Park? I think you've put it in streets.
I put it in streets because of the expense line. Now, that's a, because it's a direct correlation between the expense. And not knowing, not knowing how, how these revenues and expenses are going to be scrutinized, I was wanting to make sure that there was a direct correlation between the revenue and the expense in the general fund. So it was apparent what it was being used for because of the legal requirement to track that. Now, a transfer to the general fund is made as a transfer to the general fund. You identified it as two cents. It's six and one and a half dozen the other, if you ask me. I would think that-
I, I under, the only reason I ask is, we were talking last time and parking lot things were going to come out of B Park. Right? Like parking lot maintenance preparations and things like that were going to be a B Park expense.
Well, well-
That's why I'm going through this.
And, and where I, where it seemed that the, the B Park off-street spaces were tied to, they're basically at the pier. These off-street parkings are the ones that are similar to the street ends. Where we have, even though they're not off-street parking, that they're similar to the street ends that we own here. That was the analogy I was doing, but I mean, I-
The, the only, the way I'm looking at this and why I'm asking is we're going to continue to have some parking lot preparation costs next year.
Right.
Okay? So our last discussions were when we're doing parking lot preparation costs, you were saying that was going to be a B Park expense. So I'm looking at it as, then if we have off-street parking money that is not tied to, it must be used for streets, et cetera, can it go into B Park? So that that money is available for the expenses that will come from upfitting and maintaining parking lots?
To, to be quite frankly, I, I don't think you, that it's necessary to, to make a concentrated wholesale transfer that the off-street parking line in the general fund allows us the flexibility to make those repairs wherever they, they would need to be as part of the general fund.
Okay, as long as it's noted because-
I mean, it, there's, in, in the streets, there's on-street parking and off-street parking lines that directly correlate to that.
Yeah. Just so that when we get to that point, it's remembered that there is money in another fund that can be used for. That's, that's why I was going through that thing.
Yeah, but, and, you know, there was a conscious effort made also to create that cost center at 441. So that those costs could be contained there.
Yeah. On page four, I assume the increase in insurance and bonds is partially having the insurance cost now for the purchases we, okay? That we made?
Uh, yes, that's for the folks in August.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, yeah. On page 11, which is operation expenses, water sewer, just, just for my, why, why between the last, the last workshop and this one, the city capital cost sewer actually went down from 157 to 115?
That's county capital cost, not city.
Oh, county, sorry. I read as city, yeah.
And, and that is a, a function of the bond refunding that, that the county did.
So we just had a number that was, last time it was high. Okay. That's it on my questions for the-
Anyone else have questions? Comments?
No, I just, I asked David yesterday about the, the funds or the grant we were going to receive for the 50 foot section for our emergency inputs onto the beach on the west side of the pier. Why it didn't show up as a, you know, 100, I think, $886,000 plus? And he said that's something that couldn't be added, because it was in hand. Is that correct?
That's, that's been our practice is not to, you know, eat the chickens before we take the feathers off of them.
And I understand that because I asked Christie as well. And I, and she answered, but I also said, well, at least in the capital expense, the capital programs, I saw that the 500,000 was put in as a, you know, it might happen. Could it not be put in for this as well? And to have a specific sort of beach access line because?
You, you got to remember that that is a reimbursement of a prior year expense. And basically it goes to fund balance whenever, whenever it's accounted for. It returns to fund balance.
Which then hopefully would go to build the beach access that we will have there. That's why I was asking.
Well, I mean, that would be, that would be a board decision at that point in time when you received it to either, either return it to fund balance or re-appropriate it for beach access improvements.
Kind of still seems the same to me because the 500,000 is going to be a reimbursement as well if we get it. So I, I'm just saying, it would be an equal way of-
Well, there's a, there's a, there's a specific reason why the 500,000 in there that's counterintuitive to our practice.
Right. The 180,000 you all, you guys already have, you accepted it in March. We don't know if it's coming in in this budget year? If the, if, that they were to return it this budget year before June 30th? The deed restrictions have been sent to the attorney to file? Or if it's coming next budget year? The 500,000 that you see in here is if your part of application is not accepted this year, they turn it down and you decide to redo it next year. We have to have it listed in the capital plan in order to get all of our points. So otherwise, we would not list it in here. But it's a requirement that they have that's different than what we do. So if you were to get turned down for this round and it was next year, this would make sure that we got the three points that's allotted to that.
Understood. My only other, doesn't have to do with the budget itself, but it does have to do with the budget message. And I would ask that town manager, you go back to how it was being done in 18 and 19 with a lot more detail. Some, some very helpful pie charts, a full, a full explanation of all of the debt service so that that becomes a kind of a, a reference book that everybody has. And it's good for several years when you have all of the debt service in there. I realize that the COVID years were a bit different, but I think we, we should go back to having that more robust and explanatory budget message.
All right, anything else in regards to item number three on our agenda? Before we move on, is it your intention that you want to vote on that now? Or do you want to vote on that when or what, what?
Just later.
All right, just trying to keep everybody on the same page.
I've got, I've got plenty of guidance to, to, to draft.
Trying to keep everybody on the same page. All right. All right, so we read, we got a number four on the agenda.
Yeah, can we have a five minute break?
Well, bear with me just a minute if you would.
I can bear for a minute.
Some, some of, someone in the room other than me may have other commitments this afternoon. Are we, are we going to go to the bathroom or eat lunch or go to the pier? Or what, where do we go from here? Because it looks to me like, is that after 12 o'clock? What time is it?
11.
11 o'clock, so we got another hour, okay.
Can I have five minutes to deal?
Five minute recess. We're back in order, please? All right, we're on number four.
You got to do the one they added.
Huh?
You got to do the one they added.
Yeah, the, no, we're, yeah, we added the, the quick block queue discussion. Okay.
Did we add that at 3A?
I added it right after, I asked right after the budget discussion.
That's what you added here right at first to me?
Yeah.
Well, I understand it was added, but I'm trying to ask you, where you added it on the agenda?
Right after budget. So it, it-
And so it's 3A?
Is it?
Or whatever, right after the back.
It's made.
Just do it now.
Just do it now.
I'm just trying to find out who's on the- I apologize for my air hop.
No, I have an appointment.
All right. Ms. Penn, I guess that's you.
Yeah. It was raised at the last meeting that with the leveling and mowing done for Block Q, that this could end up being a situation where we may have people illegally parking or trying to, which will be interesting because I'll have to dodge in between signs of the, of the designated right-of-way parking. But I, I would move that the town manager direct no parking signs be installed in the interior portion of that town-owned lot. And that's within the signs that define the right-of-way parking. And that there are no other alterations within the lot other than ensuring the right-of-way portions maintained suitably until the board determines what to do next and, and has a direction for work that is to be done.
Can I pile on there? I think, I think that what we've gone ahead and done is that we've, we've got the, got it together to basically post and rope around it instead of no parking. We just secured a site inside the right-of-way, all the way around it. And then that'll, that'll, that'll be no parking.
That will e-
Scott, Scott ran that off yesterday, so we just went and did that.
Can we not just run ropes between the existing parking?
Well, hey, we do.
Okay.
I, I think that, uh-
I, I, have you noticed that? Hey.
I think we got that, too.
Sorry.
I got a point of order here. We got a motion on the floor. Got a motion on the floor.
I will, I will withdraw the motion regarding the no parking signs. And my motion then is that, that other than installing the post and rope and keeping up that right-of-way, that nothing else is done until the Board of Commissioners makes a decision how to proceed.
Now, I, I got to follow on with that. Except for the direction that y'all gave the other night concerning the closing of Carolina Avenue and the, and the, and the, and the assembly. You're talking about physical work.
I'm talking about the in, and I'm talking about the internal part of the big block queue.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a question. Since we've started the pay parking, how many boat and trailer, I mean, car and trailer spaces are there down there?
Say, say that again.
Since the pay parking has started, how many, how much parking is there for trailers, for boats?
There's nothing specifically dedicated because the ordinance does not authorize dedicated space for boats. But only true boat and trailer spaces are in mind if that one might have that are not.
But-
Can we get a second on this, so it can be in order?
Second?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know that.
Thank you. All right, go ahead and review it.
But it appears to me that the only people that park around the right-of-way in the Block Q area are boats, boats and trailers. Because there's really not a draw. It's so far away from the water, the ocean. far away from the water, the ocean, that those people park, you know, further up Jordan Boulevard like at Sunset Slush in that area.
So since the paid parking started, there's, seems to be ample spaces right now for boats?
I don't have a, I, I don't know.
Well, I promise you next weekend.
Next weekend.
Yeah.
Product's going to teach us a lot.
Next weekend, yeah.
Last week reserved for the fast majority of all boats, drivers, and then reached the bridge and then making the warning soon about most of the scene outside of that.
There were four there yesterday.
Five, five that you need to pull, five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All Carolina.
Thank you.
And does the motion mean that the town can't mow or do anything?
Just wait until the board comes up with something to do. Maintain the right of way.
Oh, so you don't want the, you don't want it mowed, you don't want block queue mowed?
I'm assuming we're going to come to a decision fairly quickly. Well, you're post and roping, which we weren't counting on, so, but, but if you're going to, if you're going to post and rope it, you can mow it.
Yeah.
Yeah. They can mow it clean.
Some of the neighbors were complaining about the, the grass and weeds holding, blowing papers and trash from surrounding areas. So the mowing was.
They never complained before.
Trying to make something neighbors happy.
Never complained.
Okay. Okay. Then I think there's, sorry, there's no necessity for anything that if it's going to be post and roped, it should, it can be dealt with as it is.
And so we don't have a motion on the floor?
No, there's no motion on the floor, other than post and rope.
And the person that made the second agreed to the draw?
No, 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 no.
Okay, all right, we're clear.
Clear.
Any further discussion on that? Any further discussion on that? All right. Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm still trying to go to number four on the agenda. Who wants to, Mr. Murdoch, Ms. Pat, which one of you wants to jump on that one and ride and talk about it?
I'll speak to that. It was my intention to have kind of a hands-on experience down there where everybody can actually look, look at the ground and, and get the chance to go in the building and try to, try to make some decisions on how to move forward with the property with the absence of Tim today. I, I don't think it's necessary to go because if anybody had a question and I had a lot, I'm not going to be able to get an answer. So we can't, we could go, but I don't see that we would get anything accomplished unless you guys just want to go look at it. I've been down there 100 times, so I don't need to, to go for my benefit, but if you guys want to still go, I'm more than happy to go, but I just can't.
I've gotten to 12.
I don't feel like I could get my questions answered without Tim. I needed Frank and, you know, there's several direct questions that I had that I, it's just.
And without those direct questions, I don't think we can get any answers. I mean, we can't, we can't get our thoughts around what we, how we want to proceed. I don't know if Brian and Pat would be willing, but should we maybe not adjourn but recess and go back to a day with Tim can, can go with us when it's good with everybody else?
To recess, we have to have a defined day and time though.
Date, time, place certain.
Mm-hmm, and.
We just have to.
Reschedule.
Reschedule and do us.
Talk to state committee.
Okay.
Yes, yes. My turn.
Before I acknowledge your motion, sir, if I may, Chris, do you know if Mr. Evans or and/or an electrician made it to the campsites on the ocean front on the east side of the pier building?
They were pulling up, I think, today when I came down to Boulevard, Ellen.
So something is going on trying to ascertain whether they're usable or what it takes to make them. Okay, I just want to make sure that was ongoing.
Will they be ready by Memorial Day?
I don't know.
All right, Mr. Brown, you were saying something?
Are we still going with food trucks starting Memorial Day?
We've got, we've got to get back to the food trucks and arrange interview to set up an exact schedule. I haven't got there with it yet, but that's the, that's the intent is to get them out there as, as quick as we can.
And is that parking lot catty corner going to be finished by Memorial Day? Nothing's been done on it?
120 Davis Street?
Yeah.
Well, you don't have an ordinance that identifies it as, as parking and, I mean, it's, or it's in there.
It's in the chart.
Okay.
Questions, we're going to have the whole field, everything that's been parked on?
Before Memorial Day, yeah.
I'll do, I'll do them, I'll do them a beer, that's all I, that's all I say. Somebody get the little amigos to come out.
I started saying we, you've got some talent up here, we can help if you need us to get a little bar cat down.
We bring the bar cat everywhere. We'll give it to y'all.
Won't cost you a dime.
Day free.
All right, anything else? Is there a motion adjourned?
Already been made.
Second.
All right, say aye. Adjourned.